Now, we're good.
All right, seeing how it is 6:31 now, we are going to call the meeting of the City of Riverside Planning Commission to order for Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Denny?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston? Mr. Owens? Mr. Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Vasquez?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a, or have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, is there a motion to excuse our absent members? Mr. Hairston is actually on military leave. Did we hear from Mr. Owens?
We did not.
So moved.
What's your motion?
To excuse Mr. Hairston and Mr. Owens.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Hairston and Mr. Owens. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. At this time, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
I have none.
Seeing none, we'll move to approval of agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve as published?
I'll move to approve. The agenda for tonight's meeting is published.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as a published. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. In your packet, you have had the opportunity to read over two sets of minutes. We will start with the May 21st minutes first. So at this time, is there a motion on the floor or any additions or deletions to the May 21st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting minutes?
A motion to approve the May 21st, 2025 regular meeting minutes as distributed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the May 21st, 2025 regular meeting minutes as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the August 6th, 2025 meeting minutes. This was a work session. Is there a motion with any additions, deletions, or a motion to approve as published?
Motion to approve the work session minutes as published.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the work session minutes as published for August 6th, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Oh, that was nice and quick. All right, so we're going to move on now. You should have received in your packet a draft of the Unified Development Code so far, and we actually have ZONCO here with us tonight, and we're going to let them kind of go over what they're working on and what we're looking at and give us a little bit of an update.
So we have Todd Kinskey with us, and I'll let him come up to the podium to give an update on the community feedback that we got and guide you through that first section of the code, particularly the districts and the comprehensive use table from that section of the code. Todd?
What do you need?
Oh, hang on a minute. Sorry. Sorry, Naya. There you go. Try and pull that closer to you. There you go. That's good.
All right. Well, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. So we're going to do two things. First of all, kind of give you a little bit of an overview of some of the results we received in this community survey that's related to some of the items in the code. I do want to start off by saying we're not really going to cover these items in the section of the code we're going to talk about. They're actually in the later parts. And so then the second half of the meeting is we're going to introduce the first three articles of the draft code and really focus in on the second and third article mostly. So the first thing, as you well know, that there's been an in-person workshop and then an online survey that's been going on about some very specific items that we're looking at changing or adding in the updated UDO. I wanted to stop and say, I will sometimes say code. When I say code, I mean UDO, so it's all the same. It's just the way that I think about things. Anyway, so first of all, there was a lot of respondents. So the first part of this shows that you had 30 people in person for your workshop and then almost 500, 492 in the online survey. And from that, there were 43 individual responses. So more, so the people who came to the meeting were there, but not a lot of them responded. Some of them did, but there were 43 individual responses. And then there were 2,541 different responses that came in online. So the first thing I would say is pretty robust response, so that's really good because we don't usually get good responses when we do zoning surveys, so that's good news. All right. So the methodology, we did look at and read all of the comments, and I believe Naya has looked at some of them and Josh as well, and it's interesting reading. You know, you have folks who clearly understand zoning, some who don't, comments, some that are germane and some that are not, some who had strong feelings and some who didn't care. And we tried to sort through those and really break those answers down because if you took their survey or saw it, it was a lot of open-ended responses, and those are really hard to tabulate. So we tried to like put them in, did they understand and agree with the change? Did they strongly disagree? It was clear that they did not like what was being proposed. And then there were a lot of kind of just other comments. They were the neutral or the one person who wrote "Fix the Streets" on every single question that they answered, that was their response. Those kinds of things, and they were off topic, we just kind of put those in a third category. So that was, it's not an exact science, but we tried our best to kind of sort them that way, just so you know. Okay, so we asked a question about corner lots. It was really about redefining the corner lot definition because folks who live on a corner or who live near a corner oftentimes have a misunderstanding about how that works. They have two foot yards. That creates sometimes issues of where they can build and where they can't build. So anyway, that was the question number five. There were 224 people who responded to that question. If you can go on. And then this other corner lot piece was really about locating things like trees and fences right up to the corner and creating a vision problem for people either at driveways or walkways, you know, and that whole, the whole notion of being able to clearly see when you're exiting a driveway. So those were the both the questions we're about. So if you attended the workshop in person, the image on the right was the image that everyone saw and responded to. So when we did the survey, we used the exact same image and then created the question so that we could get as much as possible like-for-like kind of responses. The idea was the online survey would be, you were able to respond just like you had attended. So from that, we found 51% of the people seemed to agree with the changes to the code relative to the corner lot definition, so certainly not slam dunking. You know, there was almost a half and half. And then on the second question, 60% of the respondents tend to agree that you need to have better visibility for private driveways. And then we got a question about fencing. So one of the changes proposed in the code is to reduce the height of fences in rear yards for residential uses from eight to six feet. Currently, the code allows eight. Six is pretty much the standard. And when I got to this, when I talked to Naya, I was like, you know, I was like, this is the first time I've seen an eight-foot fence in a rear yard. And so based on best practices, I said, you all should look at six feet. It's the most, it's a more common standard. It's what you, when you go to a Lowe's or Home Depot or any place, that is what they sell. You have to spend a lot more money to build an eight-foot fence. So anyway, we put that out there to see what people had to say, and 71% of the folks said keep it the same. So I'm not sure what to do with it. That's just, that's the response from, I'm sorry, back up one slide. I can't remember what the number was. 274 people who took, who responded said keep it at eight feet. The next question, there were two questions then about urban agriculture, and so the first one was about allowing chickens specifically in the regulations. It doesn't allow you to have a rooster. It sets some standards for the number of birds you could have based on the size of your yard. Anyway, and then the next question was about community gardens, setting standards when you have vacant lots for allowing folks to be able to have a community garden and also put some guardrails on restrictions on how those will be operated. On this, 58% of the folks said they would like to see the city allow chickens and ducks in residential properties. They're currently allowed now, but just on large lots, so on smaller lots. And then 71% of the respondents were okay with the proposed regulations for community gardens. And I will tell you, on the chicken question, there, it was really interesting because there were the comments that you would expect, don't allow these, it's a, you know, a health hazard, two, that's just not, that just shouldn't be something you allow on a small lot without any reasoning behind it. Then there were other comments that were about, you know, food production, being able to, you know, given the economy and people can, you know, should be able to, you know, do that, and then, and there were others that said the, we should allow more than we're allowing, the square footage requirement is too big, we should make it smaller so they could have more birds. It was really, it really ran the gamut, so, but in the end, of the numbers, 58%, I said, let's do it. Okay, next question or topic, temporary uses. So the first question here was about reducing the time, the amount of time that temporary uses can operate, but then increase the kinds of uses that are exempt from getting a permit. So there are certain kinds of things where you currently, temporary activities now that you have to come get a permit, and this would broaden that to just make it easier, customary things that people do that they would just be able to do without getting a permit in the future. And then the second question was related to streamlining the permitting process for transient vendors, things like, you know, food trucks and other types of things that are transient sales. And as part of this, we are also fixing the definitions to make it clear, removing some things in the code, so just make it simpler, setting up kind of a one-stop shop for getting the license instead of having to go from multiple places, and then also having more areas where people can do certain kinds of transient vending, you know, operations. So from that, 55% were good with the changes to the code on the transient vendor, I'm sorry, on the temporary uses, and then 71% were sort of a strong favor of supporting the streamlining, the process for transient vendors. Then we have special events. This is a new thing being added to the code, so I think currently this lives outside of the code or it's very, it's very muddled. So we tried to find some really good examples of special events, things like, things that, special events are defined as those things that really put a drain on city resources, whether it's police, fire, safety, it involves closing a street, you know, using a park, that kind of thing. And so we, again, did some best research, best practice research, and then came up with some standards. 49% of the residents recommended approval of the changes. I'm not sure that that's a really good representative answer because I'm not sure everyone really understands what you're doing now, but there were lots of questions on this. When you go through the comments, I think it was really clear that people weren't, there were more questions than there were people that understood it. So anyway, so then the next, then we asked a couple of questions about signs. So one of the things I've talked to Naya about is there's kind of a little bit of pain right now about temporary signs and regulating those and having to check them when they're, when they went up and when they come down. And so we looked at the size requirements that the city currently allows with some other standards in the region and found that the size was a little bit smaller than what's typically allowed, so we looked at. So increasing the size of temporary signs and then standardizing the duration of signs that are permitted, so how long you can keep those up. And then there was a second thing we put up there, we asked about relative to commercial signs currently right now, even if you just change the face of a sign, you have to come in and get a permit. And a lot of places, if you're not increasing the size of the sign, think of sign cabinet, you know, they have a four-by-four and you just want to go from business A to business B, or you want to just put a new, you rebranded, you want to put a new sign face up. In the past, you'd have to get a permit. Now we would be changing that to say you don't have to get a permit. Some of this is about trying to address staff capacity, and so...
Business-friendly.
Yeah. Make it easier for folks to just operate their business without having to get a permit for something that really is not fundamentally changing anything about the community, you know. So anyway, those are the questions on that one. So on that one, 53% were good with changing the limits on signage, and then 80% agreed that, yeah, okay, don't get a permit, so that was a pretty easy one. So from this, and again, we're trying to create some continuity between the two ways we collected information. The first thing I would just say is I feel like you have a high level of engagement in your city. I would say that we do surveys for clients we work with, and it's really sometimes difficult to get people excited about zoning, and so that's good. That's really great that you've got some good feedback. Obviously, privacy in the backyard is highly valued, but again, we have 274 people throughout your city that are saying that, so whether or not that's statistically valid or not, that's something we'll have to talk about, and it's really going to be a policy decision at the end of the day. But I think ultimately, there seems to be a fair level of, you know, agreement that the changes that are being made are okay. You know, no one, no one is super excited about any of these being a terrible thing. However, I would just say though, many of them, you know, the people responding yes were all just a little bit more than the people who said no. So it's, you know, I don't think any of it is a direct mandate, and so at the end of the day, I think it's really to help inform the planning commission, you know, to, you know, you're getting feedback from the community, and ultimately, the planning commission is making a recommendation to your elected body. So, you know, so this is just giving you more information as you consider all of the words that we're going to put in this revised document. So the real question for you is, is there anything that should be reconsidered? And then I think the fence thing is something you're going to talk about for sure. Those are kind of the key things I took from this. Honestly, unless you go through all the questions and read them all, and you need to have a couple hours of time to do that, I don't, you know, nothing, if something else jumped out at me, I would say, yes, you know, this is really a key theme, and I didn't see that. And I think that's just the nature of surveys. Some people give you a very long, eloquent response, but what they're, to say something very simply. Other people just using it as an opportunity to just give you their feedback on life, you know, I need my street paved, you know, whatever. So anyway, so that's, so that's just, this is just really for you to consider and just think about as we go forward. But as I said at the beginning, as we segue into the next part of this conversation about the code, most of these items are not in these first three chapters. They're going to be in later parts, and so I think as we give you those sections, this is to just kind of let this resonate a little bit, and then as you get those sections, then you'll be like, okay, now we have a little bit of feedback from the community, what are we going to do? So that, if we could, I think actually that's really...
Yeah, go ahead.
So I know you guys saw some of these boards and everything. Those boards and some of the images were from the third-grade workshop, and that was very helpful in kind of informing the sections you are going to see today, which was the use table. Those third graders kind of told, they did, tell us what they wanted to see and where in the city, and that is what staff used when we were looking at it. We worked with the steering committee and did something very similar and talked with them, so I just wanted to point that out while you saw those images throughout the presentation. But also, as we're moving forward, keep all that stuff in the back of your head, digest it, yes, and we're, use that information as we're moving forward to the next steps.
Couple of other things just to close out on the survey piece. We will go ahead and package both the elements that were in this presentation as well as the response set and make that available to planning commission as well as city council, and, you know, that'll all become something that folks can reference. I do think it's important to emphasize too that that public engagement piece is, to Todd's point, is significant for us in the sense that, you know, we had quite a lot of public engagement with our land use plan several years ago. We've had a lot of these touchpoints in the community where a response set like that has emerged between in-person and online visits. We deliberately constructed that survey to be open-ended primarily because we didn't want to create the appearance that it's like an up or down vote. It's a conversation about what folks want to have come out of their land use code, and I think some of the comments that you'll see really reflect that. There are some really thoughtful things in there in response to some of these proposals. So I think the way that we look at it as staff, I don't want to speak for Todd, but really, it's a resource document that you all can use as you're evaluating what policy you want to recommend to the council as a planning commission. When council gets it, they can look at it to help evaluate those policies too. There's not a right answer. It is about what the commission and the council feel is the best balance of all of the inputs among all the community members and among all the different ways that participants have weighed in, weighed into this process. Last thing is that even though the online survey has concluded, the opportunity for public comment and public input is not over. So I don't want anybody that's watching this meeting to get this impression that shields are up now and the city's turning away people that have thoughts about the land use plan. No, no, no. You can call, you can email, there's going to be plenty of opportunity at workshops and at city council meetings to go on the record for public comment. We've concluded that survey. That doesn't mean we've turned our ears off and we're not listening to folks anymore. So if you, if you do have thoughts, if you do have opinions, and as these conversations evolve, I want people to know that they can still reach out, they can still email, and we can, we can get those comments included as part of this process as well. So just wanted to leave it there. Any questions or anything about survey results or anything we've talked about before we get into the meat and potatoes about the code?
My only question would be more like a process question. How does staff envision the review and recommendations of the various elements of this code going before the planning commission to go onto council in aggregate or, you know, by section, or how are those going to be considered?
Because we're doing this whole code, we're going to give it to you section by section as it gets done. We want you to have time to really digest it and then look at it. It's going to take probably a couple work sessions, so I do want to suggest some dates to you all later on in this meeting.
Okay, but I'm talking about like, is the planning commission going to be asked to give an aggregate recommendation of the entire code?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Or on individual articles or...
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, it really should go as a whole, in part because we don't want to be at a place where like, there's a, you don't want to be at a place where the planning commission may have adopted three sections, we still have three left to talk about, and then council adopts three, but then we have a hiccup, and now our code's kind of between versions or anything, you know?
Well, the council is going to have the ultimate decision, so...
Right.
You know, whether we speak favorably or unfavorably against it, it's a statement, but I sort of have a problem just doing it all in aggregate because, you know, that doesn't allow for taking into account some of the survey feedback that was in here, or if there's, you know, none of these except the community gardens and the fencing really had like super majorities of respondents, so many of the other questions that were posed were rather close. So, you know, to be asked to approve the whole code with everything that's been proposed included for an up or down vote seems like, you know, we're not really getting an opportunity to review the specifics.
I want to make sure we're distinguishing though between, I think eventually we get to a point where we look for one recommendation, but there are plenty of opportunities and touchpoints to come to a consensus about the different articles before we get there, if that makes sense.
I mean, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
How is this from planning commission process going to be, you know, considered? Or are we just saying, because, you know, all of these had at least 51% that we're automatically throwing them into the code, and then they're going to be, you know, we're going to be looking at this as one document, and if you're opposed to one element or several elements of the proposed changes, you know, do you vote against the entire code? Because, you know, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So as I would say, we're going to give you them section by section, and then we'll look at them at that time, but for the final vote, it'll be the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll have time to deliberate and talk about any changes and send changes back and forth if we want to see changes and that made from whatever they present to us.
I was just going to add, so this is really just to help you in your deliberation. So as you get that section that has the section about backyard birds, community gardens, you will have some survey information to know, hey, we asked this from, you know, these 275 people responded on this topic, but you'll pass, you'll review those sections one at a time or in groups of articles. So, and then your recommendation will ultimately be based on whatever the planning commission agrees on.
So the assumption at this point is not that just because the survey information had a majority of respondents favoring one way or another, that, it seemed like all of them had at least a majority in favor, that we're not just automatically throwing those into the code?
Okay, let me refer, they're in the draft.
Okay.
So the question is, do they stay in the draft?
Right.
Yes.
That's the question you'll deliberate.
Yes.
Yes.
Are they altered in the draft? Is that a...
The draft can be edited for sure.
That's, I think, what you have to ask.
Yeah, yeah, so like, for example, we're going to have regulations on fences. If you think eight-foot fences are fine and we have six, we'll cross out six and put eight, and that's a recommendation you pass on to council. Or if you're like, we want to reduce the number of chickens that are allowed, or we want to increase the number of chickens that are allowed, we can make that edit. Or if you're like, no, we don't want it at all, we'll delete that section. So I mean, there's a deliberation process that will occur as the planning commission. Ultimately, you all set land use policy is the way that planning commission, that's the theory about planning commission, and you're making that recommendation to your elected officials, and they agree or they don't agree. So, yeah, you will have an opportunity to review all of it.
So for instance, like on the fencing item, in the draft, we're going to initially consider it will be the eight-foot or the six-foot recommended?
It is coming to you with a recommendation from your zoning consultant at six feet.
Okay.
If you want, if you feel like you want to change it to eight, then we'll change it to eight.
Okay, gotcha.
This is just informational purposes really at this point.
And we're giving to you piece by piece because we don't want you to feel like you're drinking from a, you know, a fire hydrant, so much coming at you. We really want you to have the time to really look at the sections and digest it. And that's why we're like, what's really a big part of it is the districts, and that's why we're saying, hey, let's look at this section, let's look at the map where they are going or are proposed to go, because a lot of it is, it's really not changing a lot. We're looking at, I know I'm getting off topic, talking to your point, a lot of what we're proposing is really talking to what's already in the built environment, but making sure that there is more flexibility in the commercial districts. We're talking about getting the information from residents so that we can incorporate it into the code, getting your opinions, we can get those recommendations to the city council.
Yeah, I understand that part is to, you know, look at some best practice stuff. Yeah, I, I understand that part is to, you know, look at some best practice stuff. Having been involved, I think this is the third code that I've been involved in since I've been on the planning commission. I know that when it was done the last time, it probably wasn't done in the right manner for this community. And so, you know, I think those types of things are welcome. And while they are a change, it's, it's, it's really a change in, you know, overall the philosophy of it and how it's being approached. So it's, it's a really a wholesale comprehensive change to specifically things like that are in this first section on the zoning districts and such. So I think those, you know, are certainly welcome. But, you know, there's, you know, there's, some of the others where there's maybe some flesh.
Todd, let me ask a question.
Flesh button issues.
Sorry, Tony, didn't mean to cut you off. From a best practice standpoint, how much do deed restrictions, deed covenants weigh in on the drafting of a zoning code for a community?
We, we, we tend to just not consider them because deed restrictions can be ignored. They're typically, they gotta be enforced by someone, usually an HOA. There's a lot of HOAs that are defunct.
But there could be, but there's a civil remedy?
Well, there is if there is someone who disagrees. If some, if you were violating a deed restriction or an HOA rule, yes, there are typically, there's a simple matter that can be, you know, you know, if, if there's the wherewithal to do it.
Certainly. I'm just, I'm just asking the question, is it, is it a consideration?
So when we're, when I'm drafting a code and the folks at my company are drafting codes, we tend to just look at what's the standard, you know, what are the best practices? And, and not what's permit, that's what, not what is necessarily permitted in your HOA, for example. So for example, here's, here's, I'll use an example. There are a lot of new subdivisions that they don't allow fencing in the rear yard at all. We're going to establish standards for fences in the rear yard. So, or there's some that don't allow outbuildings like sheds and, or they don't allow freestanding garages in the backyard. We're going to create standards for freestanding garages. So what the guidance is, and this is where the rubber hits the road, is when you come in for a permit, what, what everyone usually will say or they have in writing is, it's your responsibility to know what you, what's allowed on your property, what deed restrictions you may have, what HOA restrictions may exist. So when I, for example, if we use the fence height for an example, I've worked with dozens and dozens of codes and I have only ever seen fences taller than six feet in industrial districts or commercial districts. So my, from my perspective is residential, that's a really tall fence in a residential area. But for Riverside, maybe it's normal and that's what you all love and it's fine. That, as I said, I think, I think I stood here for the very first meeting is like, your zoning code is a representative of, is representative of the values of your community. If you feel like you need to have tall fences and that's what everyone thinks, then you have tall fences, you know? But I'm coming to you saying, this is what the standard is in the industry. So, but to answer your question directly, we usually don't look at the deed restrictions in our considerations for, for putting forth standards.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. All right. So are we ready?
Yeah, I think that's a good segue into the, we're, the intention of the next several meetings, not to speak for Nia or you, Todd, but I think is to start breaking this proposed code into chunks. And tonight we'll focus on the first three articles as a way to kickstart that conversation. And these are the foundational articles. And Todd, take it away.
Sure.
Can I before you do that?
Yep.
I just wanted to comment on survey a little bit. You know, I, I think that it's important to note that when you really look at the number of respondents and that with our population and if you consider maybe one person per household versus what the actual population number is, you're probably looking at, if you go with like averages and, and households and that, which I know isn't perfect, but you're still looking at probably close to 30%, 25 to 30% even at 274, you know? So I, I just want to thank residents out there for communicating that because I think with any surveys done in this community, even getting close to 300 respondents.
This was a great response.
It's good.
It was great.
And for us, it just shows that we, you know, we worked pretty hard to open that up to residents and that. And so I just want to, you know, say that I think we need to make sure that we are heavily looking at what the residents put in that, whether it's a super majority. It's not about a super majority, you know, we're not in Congress. It, it, you know, it's about the majority of who took the time to respond. And we need to really look at that. And I'm just really proud of the city, the residents of Riverside for coming out and supporting this, whether in person or online. And to all those people I hounded with personal messages to fill one out, thank you very much. So.
All right. Give me a go. Okay. Well, let me first off say, I've been working with your staff. We've been meeting every couple of weeks for like a year, since January, a couple of breaks in there. But I'd say we're at about 90% on the code being rewritten. And we've got a couple of areas we're still working on. And we didn't give you more of the code because we still have a few questions. And we want to give it to you in a forum where we have full support of your staff and also your legal review. Your, your, your law director has been, I don't have the title right. Is that his name, title law director? Yeah. He's been attending me. He's reviewed this. So we're making sure we're putting something forward that is legally defensible and meets all the various standards. So just a reminder, one of the goals of this process is to make the code more user-friendly, to make it simpler to read. Your current UDO wins the prize on wording. It's sometimes very verbose and takes five sentences to say what I can say in one. And so we've been trying to simplify and just make it easier for people to read and understand and use. So with that said, the first article has some of the legalese. And one of the things we've introduced there is some rules of measurement, just to make folks, make it easier to understand how you, how you measure things. So it's easier for both Nia and her team as well as, as residents to understand what the rules say. We've also added a little section there, just like, how do you use the code? So, so the first section is, is, is pretty brief. It's only 10 or 11 pages. But where we really start getting into change, things that are really different, is in Article Two. So we went through an exercise with, with Nia and her team on looking at the districts. So we do this calibration process where we, we take all the districts, we look at all the dimensional standards, we look at the uses that are allowed. And, and the first question is, can we simplify it? Are the things that could be melded together? And then obviously we're doing all this and being informed by, by the land use, by the land use or the comprehensive plan. So where we ended up, there's a, there's a table there, it's on page 16 of the document that identifies the new districts that we have come up with. Now, the first thing, even though, so I will tell you, the nomenclature, so all the titles are changing. All the district titles are changing. The names in some cases are the same. I'm sorry. Campus institutions were made the same. I think in the airport overlays, the districts, the overlay stayed the same. But everything else, the district names and nomenclature and symbology we're using is different. So, so as you look at this, the, the big change we've added is this new district is the residential high density. And so that, what that is, is we basically did a mapping exercise and we found all the 40-foot wide lots, all the subdivisions that were built at 40 feet wide. And those are a lot of the, a lot of the variances that you're getting are coming in on those lots because every time they need to expand, they can meet setbacks. So what we did is we created a new district and we mapped all the 40-foot lots. And that's one big proposed map change. We're going to, so we're making it better for those property owners, okay? So that's one big change. The other thing that we are doing is we took the land use or the comprehensive plan and looked at, looked at the areas where we want to see the focus areas. And we've created the Springfield Innovation District, the Roar Boulevard Mixed District, and then some of the other areas along, just some of our corridors where we had similar, we looked at creating multiple districts, but realized what we wanted to create was all the same in terms of the expectations and the development pattern and the uses. And so we ended up coming up with this mixed development district. And, and then the industrial, we renamed it mixed industrial because we looked at some of the uses in that category. So, so those are kind of the big changes. So if you go and, so we have, we can get to this in a minute if we need to, but we have a very early draft of the zoning map. And I want to say this at the beginning, we, we just sent this to Nia and her team today. So they haven't had, they had a chance to review it. So there could be errors on it. But what we did is we're trying to work with them to figure out where we put the districts. And so the districts, if you overlay it with the comprehensive plan, and we also looked at where all the existing zoning boundaries are because we're not trying to upzone or downzone anyone. We're trying to put zoning boundaries on the map that reflect the intent of the comprehensive plan. So when you're doing, this is a very philosophical thing, is when you are trying to implement your, your comprehensive plan, you can either just have it on the map and then make someone rezone whenever they're ready to try to build something there, or you can proactively rezone it and put in the right standards so that the development standards in your code will allow you to get what you're trying to get. So because of the unique, I don't know if you can make that any better.
Yeah, let me come in here for you, Todd.
So because of the unique geography of Riverside being kind of in two big islands, we did a north map and a south map. And so this is the north map. And so you'll see areas where nothing really changed. But we've, the other thing that's going on here is we have the water overlay that's being shown in some of it. But, but anyway, so we worked with Nia and her team to come up with the location of the districts. And I'm seeing that the street name labels are.
I don't think, I don't think all the streets are on there yet.
Yeah.
But Todd, just for reference, these, these different color, these different colored chunks, if you will, all reflect the new proposed districts.
Well, so they reflect either the exact boundaries that exists, that exist today. Because in many cases, like all those yellow areas, they pretty much to the right, they just, they're the same.
Mm-hmm.
Just the name is different. The, the changes really are where you see some of the crosshatch, not the boxes, but where you have the.
The pattern overlays in here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where you see the high, residential high density. So that's where we saw a lot of those smaller lots have been platted. So it made sense to reflect the built environment that's already there.
And again, the intentionality there being, you created, we created a zoning district that actually meets the conditions on the ground so that folks don't have to come in for variances as often. They're, they have a, they're in a district where they're able to do more with their property.
And allow for industrial development without going through lots of hoops.
Yeah. So that's in these, I think there might be a label that's wrong on there. But all that kind of greenish area where you see the smaller lots, that is all areas where we, we put in that new district. So.
We can look at south, south side here too.
Yeah.
Maybe if it'll let me. Technology's great. Okay.
Especially when it works, right?
And then this shows, the, basically the big blue chunk here is the base, which, you know, is the base.
That's campus.
Yeah, campus institution, all that blue color.
That did not change.
Yeah. It's multifamily.
And is it fair to say the areas that have that pattern overlay are areas that experience changes or more substantial changes?
Well, yeah, so that, I'm sorry.
That's the mixed development.
I see. Okay.
You see that along the Linden corridor. That's for a curtain spinning corridor.
This is the old Kroger then?
That's correct.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so the one thing that we did, this is actually a great map. See the areas that are just, I wonder if that's, well, the areas that are red, we, we, we had some areas that were in, you had several different business districts. And we kind of collapsed those into just calling a commercial corridor so that we simplified that because, and we agreed on the uses. The uses, we didn't create a bunch of non-conformant uses or anything. But where, where we have specific parts of the comp plan where you had identified development ideas and outcomes, or for example, in the spinning, spinning area, we have special standards and we, architectural standards and design standards for the developments there. Whereas the other areas, just in the commercial corridor, the standards are quite as rigid and they're more straightforward because it's just more of a general commercial area. So that was kind of the approach that we took. And, and I will just say this, Nia has not seen this map until a couple of hours ago. So we, we could have gotten something wrong and we, and we have to make sure we double check it and make sure that's right. But I really felt like we couldn't have this conversation to bed today about districts unless we at least had some graphic to look at. So.
Can we just see the bottom part of the legend?
Yeah.
Here, let me.
And I think something key that Todd said is, our goal is to try to not create, not forming, I mean, it will happen unfortunately, but that's the goal is to try to avoid that situation as much as possible to not create nonforming lots.
Yeah.
The Roar Boulevard Mixed Use, when I read the proposed, it says the district is envisioned. So is this a, a vision that we have for that area or, because, or is this picture the Brantwood Estates?
So you're on page 31?
Yes.
So the, the way that we've designed these district pages is just, just to try to give people an aerial snapshot of like the area in question.
Right.
And if we, we might need to adjust the verbiage, I don't know. But because this is something that's going to be, to be built, I think that's why we use the verbiage. Because if it's already an existing single family area or it's existing commercial area, we just, we just, the wording, now, we can word smith that.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out is exactly where this is.
Well.
That, yes, that looks like that is Brantwood area.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, I mean, I guess my question is, why would we call that Roar Boulevard?
Is this not the right location on that?
So that is close-ish from.
Adjacent.
Yeah, adjacent.
Adjacent, but I could see where, I mean, that's going to throw a red flag to a lot of residents that live in the, in that neighborhood, that of Roar Park and Roar, the, the street Roar Boulevard, that they're going to think that that's something, you know what I'm saying? Where if you're really looking across the street, across Brant, maybe we need, maybe it's something that, just consideration that maybe the verbiage there is not quite what it needs to be.
Same Brantwood.
Huh?
Same Brantwood.
Well, yeah. I mean, if, if that's primarily the Brantwood area and leading over into some of that property over on that area on the other side of Brant Pike, then in order to keep consistency within the community, maybe it should be more of a Brantwood something another because that would be what that area is called over there. Roar is on the other side of the street.
Well, well, at the end of the day, the question is, where are we drawing the district? And this image could just be the vacant land that's in the new district. We could do that. And then that would probably solve some of the problems.
Well, because. Well, because across is probably going, is going to be a lot smaller lots that we have issues with them not being able to do a lot of things under our current code and needing a lot of variances down in that.
That's, that's, but that's in the RHA, the new RHA.
But we could, that's the things that we can discuss and.
Yeah, we can tweak it. It's why we're doing this.
Why it's a draft, everybody.
That's right, that's exactly why we're doing this.
Big red letters.
Yeah, I think the purpose statement is still applicable because I often see young people biking and walking in those areas.
I have no problem with that, I just.
It's just the, you want an accurate image.
I, I want, I, and I want it to represent the actual area it's in, I guess, because I know friends and colleagues that I have that live in the neighborhood that actually is the Roar Park area, okay, and what they're going to look at and see Roar Boulevard is going to really see this, and this doesn't, the picture that's here anyways does not match those lots in that, that's in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I don't want confusion for our residents on that.
Yeah, because I'm seeing where it's mapped and it's mapped differently too.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I was trying to look at it, so just something to look at. I know you haven't had a chance to digest the map, I'm just saying, here's one to look further into.
Yeah. We'll fix it, we'll get it right.
Todd, where do you want to start in terms of, or do you want to back up to, or us to flip to a section of Article Two?
Well, what I want to do is just show you kind of the structure. We'll just use an example district. Why don't we go to like RM or something, page nineteen?
Nineteen?
So what, so the way we structure each one of these districts is we have basically, we've used an aerial photograph of an area that's going to be in the RM zone to just give you, so someone just knows like this is what the development pattern is like. And this is of, this is a Riverside shot, so this is, this is your community. And then just very simply, this is for the kind of uses that are allowed here, what the purpose is, you know, and then, and we show kind of a graphic of like what the development pattern kind of looks like on a lot. So what we're essentially showing there is an example of a house, and this, this hatched area is like what a bill, the billable area is, and then we show you what all the dimensional standards are on that page. And then everything else, the uses, are all in chapter three. So we're trying to keep the district simple, like, what does it look like, what's the purpose, what are the setbacks? Okay, so that's, that's just, and so, and I won't go through all of those, and there are, and, you know, as we look at these images, I already, I think one of the images, I think, I've been asked to change, but anyway, so then, but let's go and look at the mixed development district. So that's on page twenty-five. So again, this, the image of a building is just representative of like a maximum buildout. That's what we tried to show is like, if someone maxed out a lot, what would it look like? And so, again, the purpose statement is drawn right out of the comp plan, a vision for, for these areas, and then we identify what the standards are, the dimensional standards. So one of the things that we've, one conceptual thing I want to mention that we're changing is your code right now uses lot coverage as a, as a standard, and we're switching that to impervious surface ratio. And so impervious surface ratio, if you don't know what that is, basically is everything on your lot, the water can't permeate through. So rooftops, asphalt, sidewalks, whatever. Because I think this is a better representative of, a better representative of what we're trying to measure with lot coverage. And it's, there's more of a connection to stormwater, and you have lots of aquifer, stormwater, you know, protection issues, so we're really focusing in on ISR as a, as a better term.
Is ninety percent a standard number, or ninety percent max a standard?
In this district, the development pattern that has been laid out in the vision, ninety percent was an appropriate.
Okay, I, I don't know either way, I was just wondering if that was about real land.
This, this mixed development district is considered to be a higher density area.
So you would have, you could have up to that much asphalt concrete building?
Yeah, so the, yeah, and I, the development, impervious surface ratio at the end of the day, it's going to be a balancing act between building and required parking. So you can only get so big, you know, because you have to provide parking and it just kind of, it'll work. So you probably couldn't build that building quite that high, quite that big, you know, this may assume there's a shared parking agreement or something along those lines. So anyway, but ninety for this district is, is what we believe in was intending to do.
Other districts though, Todd, have different ratios.
Yes, they change, you know, so the MX is seventy-five percent. So it varies based on the intensity that we believe was intended in the comprehensive plan. But, so I showed you the one residential district now, and this one, it has the next couple of pages of development standards, so if you could just scroll one page. So this one, we have created a bunch of, we've created a series of design standards. So we have quality materials, we're looking at the building orientation, where you have to put the front door orientation so that the public can find the front door and the building is oriented towards the street. And we put some standards in here for massing, and we talked about, you know, amount of windows, having some design elements for the, for the building, roof pitch, you got to hide equipment on the roof or put it in the middle of the roof. So some requirements for pedestrian connection to the parking lots. So these are those, so again, these are those special districts where you have, you're trying to create something new that's indifferent and that's not like what you have now.
And the design standards, it's for each district, so you're not going back, okay, let me go back in the code and look somewhere else. It's right there next to the district. So it's tucked in right there, you don't have to kill searching, it's easy to find. Again, we're trying to get user-friendly, easy to read, that is the goal.
Yeah.
Lotless cross-referencing, I can imagine, as compared to the current code, which is a lot of cross-referencing.
No, you don't say.
Yes.
I just want to point that out.
Yeah, so, so that's just the general concept is, that's why when you look in the, we've, we've described this as having, this is, this is very philosophical, but zones and districts. And the difference is the zones, if you, let's say you're in the medium-ditsy residential, it could be in ten locations in the city and they have all the same standards. But in these districts, they're a defined area and they have defined development standards, and those are the standards for that district. So that's kind of broadly describing the mentality or the approach that we used on creating the districts.
And I think the concept too, for like staff was starting out, it'll make it a lot easier for businesses who are going online to see what areas are zoned and what the requirements and what's allotted, a lot easier so that they don't just turn away because it's too hard to figure out whether they can do what they want to do. I think that's part of the, and it's going to be easier for residents to find out where they're at and what they're allowed and what they're not allowed to do, correct?
That's the hope, it's a hope to make the, especially on the dimensional standards, just put it right there, very simple, very straightforward. Setback is X, setback is, you know, is, is, is very clear. Okay, so I'm going to.
So on the table on page sixteen where it has the zones and district types, they're all in one table, but they don't distinguish between which ones are zones and which ones are district.
We didn't, we didn't list them as zones and districts, we, I'm just saying, fellas, this is just the way that we have approached it. These are all of the zones and districts, there is no reason to put two, these are the zones, they function the same way.
But how do you tell within that table which one's a zone and which one's a district? I'm assuming from like Springfield Innovation down is a zone?
Well, we identify it in the, in the name, I believe, and when you get to the, the exact pages, when they're either a zone or they're called a district, when you actually get to the actual.
I would just suggest in the table that maybe it makes a clear distinction between zones and districts within the table.
We can change that.
We can do that. But maybe another way of saying that to Todd's point is that any, we'll make that revision to the table, anything that's labeled as a zone, you could conceivably see in more than one place on the map.
Correct.
Anything that's labeled a district is only ever going to be in one, one specific spot, which I think.
Except for the MXD.
Right, fair enough. But by and large, that's kind of the principle, the framework through which everything is constructed, which, speaking only for myself, I, I think that really leans in to not just what our community asked for in the land use plan, but really to what our strengths are as a community, because we have such a broad array of uses, geographies, land types, this is really, I think, a very deliberate way to try to get the code to line up with that, so that we're not trying to shoehorn property into a code that doesn't make sense. We're trying to make the code make sense for Riverside.
And that was a shortcoming before, so, yeah, I totally agree.
Okay, before I jump, jump into the third article about uses, I dare mention this, but I feel like it's important. One of the things we're also adding and making it very clear is that there's an airport overlay area. You all, if you've worked here or been here very long, you know about it, but it's not mentioned anywhere in your code, in your UDO. It's part of this county zoning that impacts several communities, Dayton, Fairborn, Riverside. And if you don't know about it, there is noise contours that are associated with the Air Force Base, and I'm not going to get into all the nitty-gritty of all the details of it, but a portion of Riverside is affected by it, and it affects what can be and cannot be built there. And however, is administered by the county, but it's not on your map. So we did, we're going to do two things. One, that overlay of the zone is currently not on the map yet, we don't have the data yet. The city of Dayton did a nice job recently, and they updated their map where they actually showed the contour lines on the map, so the people who use the map or are in the city can find it. We're also adding text into the map, into the zoning code that says, if you're in this area, it's not the responsibility of the city of Riverside to consider anything you have to go, it tells you where you have to go to seek relief if you want to. So that is, that is a new thing we're adding, and because it is a somewhat ambiguous and unusual component of land use in the city of Riverside. Okay, now if we could maybe take a look at page.
Just real quick, so it's a pretty short section.
Oh, I can pull it up here, sorry, Nia. The overlay, you mean?
Yeah.
That's on, that's on page thirty-six.
I'll, I'll add to that, just to, just to piggyback on these points, that this overlay is something that was discussed with some degree of detail by the Wright-Patt Council of Governments, of which we are a part, we sit on that board, we vote, and it is part of the base's compatibility use plan, which is like the base's land use plan. They have adopted and maintained these noise contours, and part of what the Wright-Patt COG and that compatibility use plan and the base are all looking for is greater uniformity among the communities that abut the base as far as referencing the fact that that airport, basically, we're, we're calling it an airport overlay for our code, but that these contours exist and that there are other entities that have a responsibility in enforcing those. So again, from where I sit, both as the, in, in the office here, but also on the Wright-Patt COG, this is a very natural tie-in to be sure that our code aligns with our regional partnerships and other codes that affect us.
And having worked in Dayton previously and actually sat on the COG representing the city, I feel like I understand this issue, which I'm not sure everyone does. So anyway, I feel like we've covered our basis on this and it should hopefully.
And Riverside adopted the compatibility use plan.
Yes, we've, yep.
Most of the member entities did, so.
Yep.
Is this overlay displayed on the draft map?
Not yet.
Not yet.
It's, the hard part is that map was only, there was no shape file, it was just.
It all comes back to GIS.
GIS giveth, taketh away.
Yes.
So.
We're going to have to probably create that layer.
Yes, so I've spoken to colleagues at the county.
To know anyone that does good GIS work, let us know.
To get that, so they're digging to see if we can find it.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't go to the county for that.
Well, because they, they administer the.
I wonder if it's on their county map?
I wouldn't be surprised, because the, the zoning code is, looks like it was typed on a typewriter, I mean, it's pretty old. So, and I think it's all just a black and white, you know, so I don't know that anyone's ever converted to the shape file, into a shape file unless someone at the base has done it, I don't know. So we're, we're trying to track that down.
Yes.
So, anyway, all right.
Just out of curiosity, is there any chance that when this was a village, it would have been in any of their documents or?
Well, I don't think it was in anyone's code, it wasn't in Dayton's code either. It was like, we were just made aware that this existed and we had to just counsel people to check it, and then they would have to go talk to someone from the county, and they would say, again, based on probably a paper map, on a graphic scale, it's probably off by some degree, they said you're in or you're not in, and I think we, when I was in Dayton, we have a common property owner that was upset at both of us because we were telling them they were in and they couldn't think about it.
I was just curious, because, I mean, there, there was a lot of maps and a lot of documents at the old Village Hall, because I actually took a lot of handwritten ordinances and typed ordinances and put them into the first dot matrix printer that that village ever.
So it's like, we've seen the map, it's just.
And that would have been back in the eighties.
A digital version of it.
Yeah, the map exists.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just that it doesn't exist digitally.
Yeah, that's.
So now we're living in the digital world and we just have to find a way to come back.
Yeah, like Todd said, it's, it's almost like, it's almost like a practically hand-drawn map that looks like it. And it, and it lives in, the only, the only place I've actually seen it is the Red Book that, it's like Air Force property, and it was like, it was part of their old land use plan. And so to Todd's point, when the, when the COG was looking at this, and I think there is a chart in the, in the compatibility use plan that actually describes communities that even had referenced the fact that the noise contours exist in their current codes, and more than half hadn't, of which Riverside is one, just because, again, it was kind of buried in an Air Force file for a while.
No, that's fine, I just thought if there was, and it wouldn't have been digital, I guarantee it back then, but I just thought if there was, if you didn't have something to go off of, there may be something in some old records or maybe something Judy Horn would have had at the Historical Society.
Cool, Article Three?
Okay, Article Three. So this is a bit of a shift in approach. So currently, the Riverside code is not different than a lot of codes where you read each district and then it has a list of all the uses that are permitted, all the uses are conditional, and sometimes it even has prohibited uses. And so we, we're taking a different approach, and this is kind of the trend in zoning codes. It's probably been, it's been a trend for a while now, probably ten years, where you basically do a comprehensive use table. And so the way this is set up is all the districts and zones are across the top, and then all of the various uses are on the left side, and we have them broken down by different categories, so residential, and then it goes on to commercial and institutional. And so, and what we do is we, we say the permission in the box is either it's permitted, it's conditional, or we have a new category, which we're calling permitted with special standards. And it also has accessory uses, and if it doesn't have anything in it, it's prohibited. So this is, when you talk about outside businesses trying to understand what's allowed in the city, this becomes a very clear roadmap. What is it zoned, or here's my use, where is it zoned? Where I'm buying a piece of property, what is permitted, what is not permitted? The, the second column there, the special standards, what those are, and you don't have this yet, this is coming in the next installment of this story, is those will, that will point you to a set of standards. So right now, what happens usually is that you have someone who wants to do a use and So, right now, what happens usually is that you have someone who wants to do a use and it's either permitted or it's conditional. But sometimes, uh, the conditional uses are, the, the conditions are very straightforward. Like you just have to do A and B. And you're doing this whole public hearing process for your, your board of zoning appeals to get the, I'm sorry, planning commission does a, does conditional uses. Can't remember.
BZA, right, or no, sorry, planning commission, yes, yes, that's correct.
Whoever the body is, they convene and then they meet these two things and they get approval, then they go out the door. So what this is doing is setting standards in the code that allow the staff to do the review. So for example, if you had a use that said, um, I don't know, you have to have fifty-foot separation from, if it's adjacent to a residential use and you have to have two, two means of ingress, of megress. And they designed it that way, then the staff has the authority to just approve it, uh, rather than having to do a public hearing. And so what we've done is we've kind of worked with staff and then we've also brought forward a, a lot of, a lot of these special uses. And sometimes they're uses that were previously permitted and that we're, we're moving into this category. And saying, okay, you can do this in the zone, but you got to meet these three things. For example, put a whole bunch of standards for car washes. And I, uh, and, and, uh, and this is a common thing in a lot of communities. So I was able to pull in some conditions that we've developed, working with several other communities for things that become issues with car washes. And so we have all those standards in there. And so anyway, uh, that is how this is structured. So you'll just go down by use area and we're telling you what's permitted, not permitted, or permitted with special standards. And so this is a big departure from the way that it's structured now, but it's, I mean, we're probably saving dozens and dozens of pages of code by one table. Um, and we're just making it simpler.
So, so Todd, if, if I did want to open a car wash.
Yep.
I flip to this section of the code and I can see from this table that I'm allowed to have a car wash in any of the districts that have this label. So that's these, you know, mixed, um, you know, corridor, commercial, mixed industrial, mixed industrial, mixed, et cetera. And in most of those, it's permitted with standards. So that, as long as I design and build it the right way, I don't need a conditional use.
Right.
We can just go for it. But here's the section of code where those standards will be identified.
Correct.
So to your point, instead of having to go get six sections of code and put them all side by side and try to figure out how do I get a car wash or whatever here? The table basically points the way and says, here's how to, here's where you need to go.
Yeah, and on this page, um, kind of in some, uh, reference back to the survey, community garden is on there. And so, those standards that we listed in the survey are found in section eleven oh four point one-three. You go there and it says, if you meet these four things or whatever we put there, then, then you, then you could do that use in these districts. So, that's how the structure is set up.
Back to the car washes.
Yeah.
So with thi- this model, um, if previously a car wash was a permitted use in a specific zoning district, and they could just move in by nature of the fact that it was a permitted use, this would require some review at least by staff before that could happen.
Yeah, I don't have the standard.
Wouldn't just be, uh.
I'm sorry.
Wouldn't be automatic if they could just.
Correct.
They could obtain occupancy based on, uh, the, it being a permitted use in that zoning.
And if they could meet all those standards, then they could seek a variance. So that would be the, that would be the administrative path. But you're right, typically a car wash, all we would care about is, we don't, we, we don't have any performance standards. We just have, do you meet setbacks? You know, is your sign meet the size requirement, whatever, or if there's landscaping or buffering. But in this case, we, we're talking about things like, you gotta be, the washing is inside, you know, you gotta be able, you know, in some cases, it's got to be able to be enclosed if possible, so we don't have the permanent open setup. It has things like, if there are speakers, there, you know, you can't have, can't have outdoor speaker. You know, what, whatever all the issues are that we, that we identified, I don't know what all the standards are off the top of my head, I just don't remember, but those kinds of things, we put them in there. And so then, if, if Nia or her team, when the review comes in, can say, first of all, the car wash guy calls. And you say, well, here's the standards, if they haven't already found them. And if they can't meet the standards, they maybe can never hear from them again. Uh, or they meet the standards and they modify the building or they build it, you know, if it's new, they build it appropriately and they meet all the standards. And if not, then they can, you know, they can either seek to rezone it to a district where they're, they're not required to meet all the standards, or they can seek a variance. So that's, that's a big departure, but I, it is a, it makes the identifying what's allowed where, it's a very simple exercise. And then the, the rest of this article, um, after the use table, the use table is a big thing. We just, we've added, um, we have all the standards for accessory buildings and temporary, temporary buildings and uses. And one thing I would tell you, when you reviewed the code, uh, if you, if you look through it, there's a lot of places where there's blanks and figures have like X's in them and stuff. We, we, our practice is we wait till the end to put all the numbering in because if we don't, we'll just lose our mind, just going back and editing all the numbers and figure numbers and that kind of stuff. So, um, that's kind of a, that's kind of the overview of where we're headed. And, um, maybe give you a little bit of a preview of what's next. So the, the, the next article four is the one that has all those specific uses and the standards. And I think we're, we're close. We're not done, but we're really close to having a total agreement on that. And I could just give you some example, like, things like electrical vehicle charging stations, something currently not in your code. We're putting in there, creating some standards. Live work uses, uh, uh, self-storage facilities, things that typically would just go wherever, we're creating some standards for those.
Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling units.
Heard a lot about, um, especially at your joint training, your.
And then, uh, the, the next section after that is our, what we call the generally applicable, um, regulations. And so this is where you have all of your parking requirements and landscaping requirements and fence requirements and, uh, all, all that signage. And so all that, we're, we're not quite done with that section yet. We're getting close though. So four, um, four and five are really the meat of what is, you take what we gave you today and we give you those and you really can start to understand what the development regulations are. The rest of the stuff after that is largely administrative stuff. It's all of the non-conformity rules. It's the roles of the various administrative bodies, the roles and powers are. And then it's all the administrative processes. You know, how do you get a zoning certificate, all the quasi-judicial stuff, variances, appeals. And then it's definitions. And then after that, we have the, we have the subdivision regulations, um, which are, uh, are just, uh, not changed a whole lot. They're just more succinctly designed and laid out. So, so really, after we get to the next couple of chapters, if you have one through five, the meat of what you need to really understand what the development standards are, we're there. So we're, we're pretty close. Where, where, the, the most work we have left is, um, we have, uh, on, to finish up those two chapters, just clearing up some minor issues. We, we need to do some more work on the colossary and, and then we need to put some more graphics, uh, in, in the code. We're, we're, we're getting close. And, uh, and what I love about the, the process we've had here with the staff is that we're reviewing this together in a couple of weeks. So we're not getting, you know, two or three months down the road, we give you fifty pages of text and then you change everything. We're kind of doing it, kind of, we've been swimming downstream together with each other, so, uh, it's, it's, uh, we're getting close, so.
I found the Wright-Patt map, so what, what is my prize? Is there a reward or?
Is it in GIS though?
No.
Oh, see, then you didn't find it.
It's like, how would we read this? It's from nineteen seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A county agreement with the federal government from nineteen seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, that's an ugly map.
And the contours are really, they're, they're, it's actually far-reaching.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're.
It covers four counties.
It goes all over.
Four counties are included in the second map. Montgomery, Green, Miami and Clark.
So just to, I guess pivot a little bit to next steps, unless there are questions about anything that we've talked about tonight. I think, um, again, our intention would be to come back at a work session?
Yes, so I would like to get at least two work sessions, um, on calendars. I have two dates in mind, so I'll, I'll throw them both out there. The first one is October first. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Nikki.
Thanks, Todd.
Same time, six-thirty.
October first, October what?
Yes, October first.
Is that a Wednesday?
It's Wednesday. Trying to keep them on Wednesdays seems to be easier for most.
Yeah, but normally Wednesdays are fine. I'd, my sister's going to be in town, um, for just two nights and that is problematic for me on the first.
Is she in on, on the second? Oh, no, don't. I can't do the second.
Yeah, she's going to be here the first and the second. We have to take care of some things while she's here, so. What's the other date?
The other one is October eighth.
I don't know if I can do that one. Have something going on, but I don't know the time or the date, and I don't know if I'm going to be back in town or not.
That's also the Ohio Municipal League Conference.
Well, what we may be able to do actually is, um, especially given the limitations that we have with Quorum, is maybe throw together like a doodle poll or something, or a calendar, a calendar poll. And we will just, over the next six, seven, eight weeks, try to find dates that work for you all. And then based on the availability there, um, we could call or convene and publish a meeting accordingly.
What about just backing each of those weeks up to the Tuesday?
I'm available every other Tuesday.
But I can miss one in the last two weeks in a row.
So you're saying, um, September thirtieth?
The seventh, but Harold said he can't do two Tuesdays in a row.
Okay.
Could we do? What about the twenty-ninth and the seventh? No, that's a fifth Monday, so there's no council meeting.
Yeah, I could do the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, okay.
I just would like to try to get the date set, cause we all have very hectic schedules.
Fifth week is a good thing to make.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, was that was a decent week.
And six-thirty, still good?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so that's September ninth. And then, somebody said eighth wasn't good, correct? You're out of town.
It all, it all depends.
Okay, so what about?
I have a council meeting that night.
Which night, the eighth?
The eighth, yeah.
What about the seventh on a Tuesday night? I'm willing to miss my meeting.
I can miss, I can.
Um, we do have a meeting on the fifteenth. We can also plan a small work session after that.
Well, but I thought we wanted to really try to get two in before that.
We'd like to.
It's, uh, not that far off. I mean, I'd sort of rather do that, cause you don't have any pending cases or any.
We will.
Oh, we will.
Yeah, we really will. And the timeline for this.
Well, the seventh, I have a work session at work, so I wouldn't be available on that. And council meets on the sixth, right?
Correct, yep.
You're not available normally on Thursdays?
Who, me? And not that Thursday?
I mean, any Thursday.
No, Thursdays are okay. Well, except October, the first two Thursdays are bad for me. Normally Thursday's okay, but not those two. Not the second and the ninth.
Yeah, and that's the same one I have too, so, yeah.
I got big.
But normally, like, Thursday.
Pretty good, pretty open for me.
I mean, once we get past our meeting, if we want additional on Thursdays, then that's totally different. But you're talking homecoming weekend and then there's a big awards banquet on the ninth.
So we don't want to do anything like as soon as next week?
Let me wonder next week.
The fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Would there be more to present by then?
Uh, that's kind of a, I don't know that you'll be.
Yeah, all will be gone most of next week and then BZA is Tuesday.
Okay.
It's Tuesday, the.
You, you probably need more than a week as well, right, Todd?
Well, we're in the same group.
Oh, that's right.
Tuesday's the twenty-third.
We're both at, uh, the conference.
Yep.
They're not going to have anything for us. So we've got the twenty-ninth.
You're going to be at OML? Is that what you said?
Oh, there's a state planning conference.
Oh, okay.
Next week.
We're both presenting at.
Okay, I got you.
So we've got the twenty-ninth at six-thirty.
Which is roughly two weeks from now. I mean, I, I mean, I, I think we should consider the, uh, fifteenth as a possibility.
I mean, we, we can always, we can add that. Is there, just for us to think about and maybe bring it up on the, the fifteenth at our meeting, okay? Since we can't really find a, between all of the homecoming stuff that's going to be going on in the community and, and everyone's schedule, it looks like the first two weeks of October is a little hectic. Um.
Unless we get a Saturday.
I was going to say a Saturday, maybe marathon.
But that's not probably as good for staff, right?
Saturday, the eleventh? Or, might be hard for me, but.
I, I could probably do the eleventh. I mean, we'd, wouldn't be talking more than like a couple of hours, right?
I'd prefer the eighteenth. I'm supposed to serve dinner to a hundred and twenty band students.
Well, if we're going to go that far out, then I'd rather just do the fifteenth, cause that, the whole argument for not doing the fifteenth was that it's too far out, so.
Well, I mean, I, what I'm saying is if we do the fifteenth, we may need, we need to kind of pull some extra days in there to get the timeline.
Well, and that's, I, I don't want there, I'd certainly appreciate the, I think we're all in the same boat, where we don't want the process to drag out and out and out at, at the same time. We don't, I don't want us to rush it either. Uh, so if it, if it makes sense to plan on the twenty-ninth for now, let us try to get some, let us, let us look at calendars. We'll do the poll, see where people's availabilities are. Between, you know, uh, in October, we can work around the edges, October and November to try to, to fit work sessions in and go from there. I think to, to, again, not to put words in Todd's, uh, mouth, but, um, the two, the next two sections really are the mediest. And that's where, you know, you, we, I don't want to, again, it's, it's, the, the conversation, um, will take as long as it needs to. But that's where I would expect maybe some more time to go in, just because those are the sections where we were really talking about some of the things that were in the survey, some of these other elements. So, you know, to the extent that, once we're through those sections, the rest of it's largely administrative and generally boilerplate kinds of language, I don't know that we'll need a, more than a meeting for the back half of the proposed code. It really is kind of the next two articles where I think a lot of the energy is going to go.
I do agree, we need some time to do that, cause before we were just given such large chunks without little debate and then it was just like, approve this up or down or, you know, and move it on, so I think we want to avoid that, for sure. And if it had to be the fifteenth, uh, could we ever consider having planning commission meetings start earlier?
I'm good.
I mean, I can be here.
I can be here. It's up to you guys.
And then do the work session like.
Harold's work and David's work and Jonathan's work.
Well, we don't have to worry about Jonathan right now, but. I mean, like, even if we could start at five-thirty with a regular meeting and then have the work session after, at six-thirty or something like that.
So Todd, maybe to put you on the spot here slightly, would you be at a place by the twenty, it's the twenty-ninth of this month, correct?
For a work session.
For a work session on the twenty-ninth, would you be at a place where at least article four would be ready?
I think we, I think we can have both articles ready.
Okay, well, well, but I'm, I think maybe. Okay, well, well, but I'm, I think maybe what we do is, if we plan on the twenty-ninth and let's tee up, we can be prepared for both articles if the conversation goes quickly. But let's kind of see where that conversation goes, um, because honestly, depending on, that may give us a better sense of time. You know, if we're not very far the way through Article Four on the twenty-ninth and it looks like we may need even more dates, then we have more of a basis to say, maybe we need to get serious about a Saturday or another, another date. So let's kind of use the twenty-ninth as a, as a test. And then we'll continue the conversation about where to fill in additional work sessions from there.
Do we want to tentatively just say that plan, just for your schedules, to start at five-thirty on the fifteenth, though?
That's fine by us.
Just, just tentatively.
Yeah, 'cause I would have to.
We can decide for sure on the twenty-ninth, but.
'Cause I have to send notices out.
Right. I just wanna make sure that.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we put it on our schedules for that, so we don't have.
For five-thirty, five-thirty or six?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty works.
At least the three of us can be here at five-thirty.
Okay.
So I would have to look at applicants.
September twenty-ninth will be six-thirty then.
Yeah. If there's a problem with the applicants, though, let us know, maybe we could do a work session for an hour or so beforehand, then.
I was just gonna say, yep.
My, my experience is that applicants want to be here as early as possible.
Possible, yeah, I would think, but just in case.
So six-thirty on the twenty-ninth of September, five-thirty on the fifteenth of October. And in the meantime, we will see where the conversation takes us and then start trying to look for other dates that may work.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
That is all.
All right, matters by commissioners, St. Rogers.
Nothing for me. Just want to remind everyone, we have one, um, commissioner who is on military leave and will be probably until the first of, um, the year, is my understanding. So it's important that, um, that's the reason the big discussion about dates, it's real important that we have at least three of us here out of the four remaining, so that we can continue business and get business done as we need for our applicants and on this code as well. And we can keep moving forward. So with that, um, seeing no more business before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.